A quorum of 25 voters being present, this annual town meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for being here today. In accordance with the most recent CDC guidance, masks are not required to be worn here today by anyone who is fully vaccinated. The CDC still recommends mask wearing for those who are not fully vaccinated, and of course, you may wear one by personal preference. The first order of business is what I call the preliminaries. This is where I go through some of the basics and explain how we will operate this morning. Town meeting is not the public comment section of a select board or school committee meeting, nor is it a public forum or a public hearing. What town meeting is, is the legislature for the town of Ashland, and today, we are sitting in legislative session. Together, we collectively approve the town budget, vote on capital purchases, approve bylaws, and more. My name is Adam Schuster, and I am the moderator. My job as moderator is to serve as the presiding officer of this legislature. I believe part of my job is also to ensure that those here in attendance understand what is going on, so I'll do my best to explain anything out of the ordinary. If at any time you have a question about something, please ask, as there are likely others with the same question. I'll be guided in running town meeting by the third edition of the Town Meeting Time, which is published by the Massachusetts Moderator Association, and is generally recognized as the authoritative guide to running town meetings in Massachusetts. Joining me up front are members of the school committee, select board, finance committee, town council, Adam Costa, town manager, Michael Herbert, assistant town manager, Jen Ball, finance director, town accountant, Brittany Yakaponi, and APS superintendent, Jim Adams. With me, also behind me, town clerk Tara Ward, and assistant town clerk Cindy Livingstone. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for later rebroadcast on WACA TV. Welcome to those of us, those watching us. When you checked in this morning, you received a blue index card. It is important that you hang onto this card, as you will not be able to vote without it. Because votes will be counted based on the display of cards, non-voters and members of the press may sit anywhere in the auditorium. I will generally be able to determine the results of each vote by a simple show of cards. In the event I'm able to do so, we will take an actual vote count. Please ensure that you have turned all cell phones and other electronic devices to mute. If you have to take or make a phone call during these proceedings, please leave the gym to do so. The warrant that was posted and from which we are working today constitutes a notice or warning to all voters of what we will discuss today. Town meeting can only take action within the scope of an article on the posted warrant. Similarly, any discussion is also limited to the scope of the articles on the posted warrant. Town meeting acts on motions. If there isn't a motion before town meeting, no action, including discussion, can take place. In order to allow for discussion, I will enter in a motion and a second for that motion after each article has been introduced and explained, but before discussion commences. Once the motion is made and seconded, it is subject to amendments from the floor. The procedures for amendment and article are listed at the back of your handbook in the section titled Selected Town Meeting Procedures. If you have a question or comment during discussion of an article, make your way to one of the two microphones and wait to be recognized. After being recognized, please state your name and address, and direct all your remarks to the moderator. Please keep your comments brief, and ensure that they relate directly to the article being discussed. If you are unable to get to one of the microphones, please raise your hand, and I will have a microphone brought to you when it's your turn to speak. To ensure that we're able to hear from the greatest number of people, each speaker will be limited to one 90-second turn of the microphone during discussion of each article. Speakers may return to the microphone for a second time once all others wishing to speak have done so, but that second term will be limited to one minute. Frequency limits will not apply to discussion of the annual budget, but time limits will. If you are responding to a question, please do so through the moderator. There should be no direct discussion between parties at town meeting. All debate is to be conducted in a respectful and courteous manner. No comments of a personal nature are to be made. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, and personal attacks, will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling or unable to comply with this rule will be removed. I'd also ask that everyone refrain from applause and similar outbursts during discussions. Moderators' motions are listed in your handbook on page four. They are the same standard motions we approve each town meeting, so I'll ask to address them as a group. Do I have a motion to approve moderators' motions one, two, three, and four as printed in the handbook? All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Onto our business for the day. Article one, to see if the town will vote to transfer available funds from the general stabilization fund to support the FY22 general fund budget, or pass any vote or taking action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town approve the transfer of $900,000 from the general stabilization fund to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, for the ensuing fiscal year as set forth in the FY22 general fund budget. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good morning, everybody. As the moderator stated, this motion is to transfer $900,000 from our stabilization, or otherwise known as our rainy day account. This will be the second year in a row that we have withdrawn from our stabilization fund due mainly to the economic conditions presented by the pandemic. It's actually reduced to $900,000 from the $1.4 million that we took out last year. So this $900,000 is being used to bring up our revenues to support our FY22 expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll enter in a motion that the town approve the transfer of $900,000 from the general stabilization fund to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, for the ensuing fiscal year as set forth in the FY22 general fund budget. Do I have such a motion? Discussion.
Can we touch this?
Yes. I was going to suggest you move that down.
Julie Nardone, 86 Elliott Street. I do have a voice condition, so hopefully you can hear the condition through the mask, so it's like a double condition. The $900,000, is that being taken out from the $1.2 that was put in December?
So Julie, it's not, it's from that same account? So we deposited the $1.2 million from free cash into that account last year, and then we're taking $900,000 out. Our balance total is, Brittany?
Currently 7.4 million.
Okay, thanks. And it says debt and interest. Is the money for the public safety building in this $900,000 that the towns have, that they agreed to?
Mr. Herbert?
So the $900,000 doesn't go in to cover specific line items within the budget? It just goes into the general revenue to support all different items of the budget?
So, no.
No, the answer is not no. The answer is, the question, it's not, I don't say it's not a valid question, but there's nothing specific. If it's in the budget, if that expenditure is in the budget, then it's part of what this will want.
I'm just trying to find out where it is in here, without getting up 900 times. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will require a two-thirds majority, and we'll start with a card vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article two, fiscal year 2022 budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from available funds and/or transfer from available funds in the treasury such sums of money as are necessary to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, for the ensuing fiscal year, or pass any vote or taking action relative thereto. As is our custom, we will now hear the finance committee's report from Jonathan Moore, vice chair of the finance committee. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Jonathan Moore, and I am the vice chairperson of the Ashland Finance Committee. Our chairman is Mr. Scott Warnetsky. I'm joined by our secretary, Jennifer Cooney, and committee members, Ashwin Salvi, Ryan Turncliff, Jack Walsh, and Edward Hart. The finance committee is the authorizing body for expenditures from the reserve fund, which are designated funds within the budget set aside for extraordinary expenditures, including deficits in snow and ice operations. The finance committee considers all articles within the town warrant and referendums. The committee deliberates and provides a report as to the recommendation for each article brought before it. Additionally, the committee conducts annual meetings with departments, department heads, to examine operating budgets and requests. One year ago, our town's financial health and credit worthiness was affirmed as AAA rated by Standard and Poor's. Earlier this month, that assessment was reaffirmed, and once again, Ashland was assigned a AAA credit rating with a stable financial outlook. A note from S&amp;P's report, quote, "Ashland is operating with very strong budgetary reserves and flexibility, and well-embedded financial management policies, particularly in the areas of budgeting and planning. Supporting the AAA rating, in our view, are Ashland's very high wealth and incomes, and its strong operations exhibited over several years, even through the pandemic. The town's prudent financial management and adherence to long-established reserve policies and planning procedures provide stability to its credit profile. The stable outlook reflects our view that the town will maintain steady operations and keep reserves at strong levels, which will allow it the flexibility to withstand unanticipated budgetary challenges," unquote. Last year, in anticipation of the COVID-19 pandemic's toll on municipal revenue, town leadership took proactive steps withdrawing reserves from the stabilization fund. The stabilization fund acts as a rainy day savings account in which set percentages of town revenue are saved each fiscal year so that town services may continue uninterrupted in the event of a sudden deficit. Ashland has methodically built the stabilization fund since the 2008 financial crisis. Of the amount withdrawn last year in the early days of the pandemic, we're pleased to note that 100% of the withdrawn reserves had been paid back to the fund. This is not to say that we are out of the woods. The pandemic still has the potential to manifest challenges to the financial future of our community. Even with the stabilization fund's use in closing budget deficits, it is not a panacea from which we can rely upon indefinitely. We acknowledge that there are pressures on departmental budgets, but foresee no immediate austerity. While the stabilization fund is capable to help us bridge budget gaps for the next two to three years, should the current environment persist, spending increases that departments are accustomed to may become challenging to support in the intermediate term. Measures to raise revenue may be necessary considerations. The finance committee has reviewed and does support town leadership's decision to again withdraw from the stabilization fund proactively for the coming fiscal year in order to close any structural deficits that may arise. The finance committee's oversight and function as a town advisory board to the town legislature and leadership rests solely in the duty of care to, in the best interest of, the citizens of our community. Finance committee endeavors to sponsor policies that will support Ashland in achieving a smooth financial landing and a stable future for all of our citizens and stakeholders." Thank you.
Thank you, John. Voting on the budget is a two-step process. First, we will review and vote on the appropriations for each of the various accounts. After action has been taken on all the accounts, we will vote on the overall budget. I will start by reading the numbers and names of a series of accounts. If you have a question or comment on an account, yell out "hold." After voting on all unchallenged items, we will go back and discuss any that were held. Account 01123, town manager. Account 01138, central purchasing. Account 01139, telecommunications. Account 01151, town council. Account 01155, data processing. Account 01161, town clerk. Account 01162, elections, town meeting. Account 01163, board of registrars. Account 01180, human resources. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. We had a hold on 1123, town manager. Ms. Nardone?
Yes, I'd like to know what the $76,000 decrease is.
So the $76,000 decrease, so there's a net change to contractual increases, but then that's been offset by movement of $25,000 of the communications and cultural coordinator salary, which was split between the economic development revenue fund and the town manager budget. Now, that's fully on to the economic development revenue fund. And then, at the last special town meeting, we put more money into the budget to pay for non-payroll-related expenses, so contractual services, things of that nature, and so that's been decreased.
Anything further? All those in favor of the budget for 1123, town manager, please raise your blue cards. And opposed. That passes. Account 1135, town accountant, 01135. Account 01141, assessors' office. Account 01145, treasurer. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. Opposed. That passes. Account 011, conservation commission. Account 01172, open space committee. Account 011175, planning board. Account 01241, inspectional services department. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. That passes. Account 01210, police department. Account 01220, fire department. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes. Account 01510, health department. Account 01543, veteran services. Account 01544, human services. Account 01610, public library. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those pass. Account 01192, public buildings and property maintenance. Account 01421, DPW administration. Account 01422, highway. Account 01423, snow and ice removal. Account 01424, highway street lighting. Account 01429, highway combined fuel. Account 01491, cemetery parks and trees. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. Those pass. Account 01300, school department. Account 01399, Keith Tech Vocational School. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes. Account 01710, debt. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes. A quick note before we get to the capital projects line. Capital projects listed in the handbook are anticipated to be funded under account 01930 appropriation. The appropriation we are about to make is not for the individual items listed, but rather for account 01930 in total. As such, the individual items listed are not subject to amendment. Account 01930, capital projects. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes. Account 01911, employer retirement. Account 01912, workers' compensation. Account 01913, unemployment compensation. Account 01915, group health insurance. Account 01945, other insurance. Account 01960, salary contingency. And account 01132, reserve fund. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. Salary contingency, Ms. Nardone?
Yes, I'd like to know how many staff this covers, and what it includes specifically.
So how many staff it covers and what is included specifically? Mr. Herbert?
It's all the municipal staff, so it covers all the municipal staff. And what happens, Julie, is as contracts get settled, so this is on the union side, so as contracts get settled, at the next town meeting, money will be moved from the salary contingency line to the departmental lines where those union employees were working. So you'll see a transfer there. For non-union, we do, we are looking at doing a 2% increase there with a mixture of, that would be a mixture of COLA, which is a cost of living increase, and a merit increase. And those would be transferred to the departments as well.
Okay, so, are we just talking town-side employees?
This is, yes.
Municipal.
And any rough idea of how many?
Any rough idea? I'm sorry, we didn't hear that.
Is it, how many people? Is it 50? Is it 12? Is it seven?
Number of individuals covered?
I mean, 100. I would say close to 150.
All those in favor of the appropriation for 01960 salary contingency, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes. Enterprise fund, 6,000 water enterprise. 6,100 sewer enterprise. 6,200 trash collection. 6,300 field management. 6,400 cable access. That wasn't expected, was it? 6,500 stormwater. All those in favor of the unchallenged items, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. Those pass. Cable access, the least surprising question of the day.
So, Amy Seid, 106 High Street. Can we get a little bit more color as to what's driving that very large increase?
I'm sorry, you can't. No, no, you can't. We have to vote.
Thanks.
Mr. Herbert?
I'll excuse me, I'll respond. So in the past, we only included capital expenditures in the budget. This year, we have all of their operating expenditures as well, so salaries, benefits, all of that is now flowing through our general ledger and our banking accounts, so we've had to increase the budget substantially for it now.
And just a note for those who haven't read ahead, you will see in about one page an appropriation to cover that. All those in favor of 6,400 cable access, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. All right. We've approved the individual line items in the budget. Now we will need to approve the overall funding mechanism. For that, I'll enter in a motion for the general fund that the following amounts be transferred from the respective accounts. EMS revolving, $200,000. Sale of cemetery lots, $30,000. Dog licenses, $25,000. Recreation revolving, $10,975. And that the balance be raised and appropriated, $66,350,859. B, for the water enterprise fund, that $2,910,219 be raised through the water rates. For the sewer enterprise fund, that $5,847,591 be raised through sewer rates. For the rubbish collection enterprise fund, that $1,450,921 be raised through solid waste rates. For the fields management enterprise fund, that $175,352 be raised through the fees for field usage. For the cable access enterprise fund, that $647,000 be raised through the cable franchise fees. For the stormwater enterprise fund, that $324,137 be raised through the stormwater rates. For the economic development special revenue fund, that $227,388 be appropriated from the available meals tax funds. Do I have such a motion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. This requires a simple majority. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously, unanimously. We have a budget. Article three, transfer to the OPEB trust sponsored by the select board. To see if the town will transfer $200,000 from the OPEB contribution account to the OPEB trust, trust, or pass any vote or taking action relative thereto. The finance recommends the town so vote. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is one half of our two-step This is one half of our two-step approach to help fund our OPEB liability. For those that don't know, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's a fancy way of saying retiree health insurance. And that liability accrues as, as employees go through and advance through their municipal career. So we had a large outstanding liability, and what we decided to do, we decided to start looking forward and moving ahead with trying to close that liability. So again, we came up with a two-step approach. The first step, which this covers, is to pay for the annual required contribution, OPEB contribution, for each new employee that was brought on. The second is to take a transfer, or excuse me, transfer a balance, or transfer some percentage of money from our free cash balance into this OPEB trust fund at the end of the year. So this year's total, when you look at the new employees that have been brought on, that raises our OPEB contribution in the annual town meeting to 200,000.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town transfer the sum of $200,000 from OPEB contribution account 01915-51709 to the OPEB trust, account 88100-49710. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article III, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed? That passes unanimously. Article IV General Annual Consent Article. To see if the town will vote the following consent articles, which I shall not read in their entirety. Grant Program Authorization. Road Contracts. Contracts in Access of Three Years. Lease Purchase Agreements. Revolving Funds. Grant Easements. The Finance Committee recommends the town approve Article IV as set forth in the warrant, and further, the town set the maximum amount that may be spent on the revolving funds in subsection five of Article IV. Note that the proposed maximum spending amounts for each of the revolving funds are the same as the maximum spending account amounts for FY21. Given the routine nature of items contained within consent articles, they are normally voted without discussion. As such, I will ask for a motion and then move directly to a vote. At this point, I entertain a motion that the town approve Article IV as set forth in the warrant, and further, the town set the maximum amount that may be spent on revolving funds in subsection five of Article IV, as is indicated in the warrant book. Do I have such a motion? Because this involves easements, this will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article IV, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed? Those opposed? Mr. Terry, I think you voted once already. Thank you. We do not tolerate election fraud in this meeting. Chief, are you watching him? Article V, the Annual Consent Article for the Community Preservation Act. To see if the town will vote the following items. Community Preservation Funds FY22 Annual Appropriations. From FY22 Estimated Revenues to Community Administrative Expenses, $67,883. Reserves. From FY22 Estimated Revenues to Historic Resources Reserve. From FY22 Estimated Revenues to Community Housing Reserve. And from FY22 Estimated Revenues to Open Space Reserve, $60,909 each. And from FY22 Estimated Revenues to Undesignated Budgeted Reserve, $426,365. Oak Street Bond Payment to Appropriate $154,525. High School Athletic Fields Bond Payment to Appropriate $320,950. Warren Woods Bond Payment to Appropriate $159,218. Valentine Estate to Appropriate $45,986. And further, to transfer $45,725.24 in Community Preservation Act Funds to the General Fund to pay for the bond payment, which was made in FY20 for the purchase of the Valentine Estate. And to transfer $46,086.25 of Community Preservation Act Funds to the General Fund to pay for the bond payment, which was made in FY21 for the purchase of the Valentine Estate. Or pass any vote or taking action relative thereto. The Community Preservation Committee recommends the town vote in favor of the Community Preservation Act Consent Items as set forth in Article V. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote in favor of the Community Preservation Act Consent Items as set forth in Article V. Note that the amounts being appropriated for items A, B, C, and D in this article are in each case less than the amounts appropriated for FY21. Item E is new this year based upon prior town meeting action. As with Article IV, due to the recurring nature of this article, I will ask for a motion and then move directly to a vote. I will entertain a motion that the town approve the CPC Consent Article as set forth in Article V. Do I have such a motion? This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed? That passes unanimously. Article VI Appropriate Funds for Valentine Barn Roof and Structural Repairs and Invasive Plant Removals Sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate up to $125,000 to enable the Town of Ashland to complete roof and structural repairs on the barn, as well as perform invasive plant removal on the property located at 133 West Union Street. The barn located at said address is identified on Massachusetts Historical Commission's Slate Register of Historic Places. Repairs to the barn are to ensure the protection from further injury, harm, or destruction, and provide stability and weather tightness to the structure to be completed in compliance with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties under Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act. And that to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to $125,000 be transferred from the Historical Resources Reserve Account to the Community Preservation Fund Balance with unexpended funds as of June 30, 2023, be in return to their funding source, or pass any vote or taking action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. It's on. Oh, yes, you can turn it around.
All right, thank you. So hello, fellow neighbors. My name is Amy Sayed. I am one of the members of the, of the Community Preservation Committee, and I'm here today to tell you a little bit more about this particular article, along with some of the breakdown of the dollars that are involved in it. So as Adam mentioned, the total grant request is for $125,000, and that will be broken down into three specific areas. The barn roof replacement, the barn foundation and floor support, along with the invasive plant removal. The barn roof replacement is estimated, is the $50,000 of that particular request, and that would include the complete replacement and weatherproofing of the existing roof. The $40,000, which is the barn foundation and floor support, which includes the repair and replace of the barn sills. And then finally, the invasive plant removal of $10,000, which is to remove many of the invasive plants that have been significantly impacting and threatening to, to further harm the property. You'll notice that that does not add up to 125,000. There is a $25,000 over, anticipated cost for cost overruns, specifically as we're not 100% sure what the full damage to the roof is until the repair begins. And then also, as many of you may know, cost of raw materials right now is at a bit of a premium. So thank you very much for your time, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thanks, Amy, for the presentation or the explanation. I do want to let everybody know that the Valentine Committee, which was formed to consider the adaptive reuse of this property, one of their recommendations to the Select Board was to vote to repair the roof and the foundation, and the Select Board also voted in favor of this at a recent meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriate up to $125,000 to enable the Town of Ashland to complete roof and structural repairs on the barn, as well as perform invasive plant removal on the property located at 133 West Union Street. The barn located at said address is identified on the Massachusetts Historical Commission's Slate Register of Historic Places, MACRS database as ASL.196 and ASL.27. Repairs to the barn are to ensure the protection from further injury, harm, or destruction, and provide stability and weather tightness to the structure to be completed in compliance with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties under Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act. And that to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to $125,000 be transferred from the Historical Resources Reserve Account to the Community Preservation Fund Balance with unexpended funds as of June 30, 2023, be in return to their funding source. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, which will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article VI, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed? That passes, but not unanimously. Article VII. Accept Easement from YMCA for Trolley Brook Square Sponsored by the Select Board. See if the town will vote to accept an easement from the Metro S. Young Men's Christian Association for the purpose of a bike path, public bike path, or multi-use rail trail to be under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board, and authorize the Select Board to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same, or pass any vote or taking action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Herbert?
I want to pass this over to our Assistant Town Manager, who's been working on this.
Thank you. This is really to just accept an easement from the Y in their new location will be on Memorial Drive, and it will allow the Upper Charles Trail to begin their first phase of their, their trail project that will go from Memorial Drive down through Magunko. And so this will allow some shared use between the Y. The Y met in April to discuss this and was very enthusiastic about the partnership, and the easement will allow us to construct its trail with a little bit easier bike and pedestrian accessibility along Memorial Drive.
Thank you, Jen. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town accept an easement for the Metro S. Young Men's Christian Association, Inc., which is shown as the trail easement, including approximately 2,875 square feet, and is shown on a plan entitled Plan of Easement prepared by BSC and dated May 20, 2021, and on file with the Town Clerk for the purpose of the public, of a public bike path or multi-use rail trail to be under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board, and authorize the Select Board to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same, or pass any vote or taking action relative thereto. Do I have such a motion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Chris Gazzard, 21 Park Road, Ashland, Mass. Being on Park Road, I like the idea. I'm for the easement, but having bicycles pull out onto Magunko, people, pedestrians walking on Magunko, that seems like an accident waiting to happen, crossing over, just getting from Stone Park, Anne Marie's across the street. What are the plans? This seems very vague, and I think when we're dealing with industrial vehicles coming out and back and forth down Magunko, down Park Road, down Cherry, I think the easement should be even talked about to put it out to Memorial Drive and let the trucks go out that way. This, the plan that is somehow density, we want density, 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 now you're going to put pedestrians at risk? I have a real problem with that, so I'd like to hear more color on that. I am for the easement. I think it's, as on its face, is great, but I have real concerns about Magunko. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gazzard. We're not going to get into the specifics of the rail trail or the public bike path. That's not the subject of this warrant article. The subject is the easement itself, so we're going to limit questions to the easement.
Preston Crowe, 41 Rockwood Drive, and I'm also a member of the Ashland Upper Charles Trail Committee. If anybody has questions about the broader scope of the trail, and we're very concerned about safety, they're welcome to come to any of our meetings. The schedule is on the town website, or talk to me afterwards. As to this easement, we can build the trail without this easement, but as stated, it just makes the trail have a bit of a gentler slope, and it also pulls it on to the Y property, which can facilitate having a exit directly into the Y for people who want to use that. So all, all around, it makes for a better trail, and that's why we're doing this.
Ms. Kendall?
Tricia Kendall, 6 Rebeneka Road. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the YMCA, and at our meeting, where we discussed, this is a matter of the YMCA having come into possession of that property, giving this easement, it's just a small corner of the YMCA property, to actually ensure safety at this particular crossing of the bikes along that path. And I can agree with what Jen said, that it was a very nice coming together of Ashland and the YMCA in, in a kind of partnership, which I think both will be good for both
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion. Typically, a vote on an easement requires a two-thirds majority, but whereas there's no consideration involved, this will only require a majority, a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article VII, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed? That passes unanimously. Article VIII Amend Zoning Bylaw Clarification of Design Review Process Requirements Sponsored by the Planning Board. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Ashland Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 282, Section 9, Section 9.63, to change the existing reference from 9.4.7 to 9.4.1.7. The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting.
Tricia Kendall, 6 Rebeneka Road, and I'm also here representing the Planning Board. So I will be talking about the next three zoning articles that are on our agenda tonight. They unfortunately get more wordy and more complex as we go along, so this is the simplest one. This is really just a matter of bookkeeping. We're going to be distributing some copies of what is on the board now, so you'll have it in your hands, but, but up on the screen, that obviously helps as well. So what this is, if we can, if we can, or these are, these are just the amendments, is that right? Yeah, okay, sorry. So it's, what is being distributed now is a better description of the change. I'm going to rotate a little bit, too. In order so that you can see the exact wording. So what happened is that the existing bylaw is about the authority of the Design Review Committee. The Design Review Committee is a five-person board that is assigned through the Planning Board, and they look at buildings that come up for design review and evaluate them in depth. And this general existing bylaw is about what buildings in Ashland need to go to the Design Review Committee for this in-depth kind of look. So the first three points in the existing bylaw say that, one, downtown and Pleasant Street have to go to the Design Review Committee. The Route 135 corridor has to go to Design Review Committee. Route 126 has to go down, has to go to the Design Review Committee. And the fourth point says properties with projects requiring design review per Section So what this bylaw is saying is that that 9.4.7 is actually an error. It should be 9.4.1.7, and that the 1 was left out. So on your sheet, you can see existing bylaw points to 9.4.7. And what this points to is really about building design. It's what the Design Committee is supposed to be doing once they're talking. It talks about the character and scale of buildings, appropriate building materials. It doesn't go with the other three items on the list, which is about saying which buildings they talk about. Instead, that, that number should be pointing to 1.4, or sorry, 9.4.1.7, the 1 was left out. Site Plan Review, which says all applications for building permits, including six or more parking spaces. So that would, it wouldn't matter where in Ashland a building was going up asking for six or more parking spaces, it would need to go to the Design Review Committee for more intensive design scrutiny, and that is what that bylaw is saying. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm going to sum this up. It's fixing a mistake in the zoning, to add one. The, oh, is there a recommendation from the Planning Board? You might as well just sit next to the chief. He won't bite.
Yes, Planning Board obviously recommends that you approve this bylaw change. Thank you.
To allow discussion, I'll hand in motion that the town amend the Town of Ashland zoning bylaws, Chapter two eighty-two, Section nine, as printed in the warrant. Do I have such a? Discussion.
Preston Crowe, forty-one Rockwood. Last year, when I was Chair of the Planning Board, we also recommended this for Springtown Meeting, but it was withdrawn to keep Springtown Meeting shorter. So this has been around for a while, and the Planning Board, a different membership, also made the same recommendation.
So what you're saying, Preston, is that when you were Chair, it was a mistake, and Tricia's fixing the mistake that you made?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
No.
I know. Trying to make sure everyone's awake. Seeing no further discussion. This, as with all zoning articles, will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, and opposed. I declare a two-thirds majority on that, and the article passes. Article nine, amend zoning bylaw to add a new section covered open air front porch sponsored by the Planning Board. To see if the town will amend Section four, Dimension requirements of Chapter two eighty-two of the Town of Ashland zoning bylaw by adding a new Section four point one point six, covered open air front porch as printed in the warrant. Before we get into this, I want to make everyone aware of some changes, not really changes, just corrections. Currently, you have a list of eight items in this article numbered one through eight. Article, item number three reads, "Of a height greater than one story as related to the adjoining building and with inhabitable space or balconies located above the covered open air front porch." That should actually be two different items. Item three would read, "Of a height greater than one story as related to the adjoining building." Item four would read, "With habitable space or balconies located above the covered open air front porch." Existing, or as noted, items four, five, and six will be renumbered to five, six, and seven. What you have in front of you that says items seven and eight, those are errors. There should not be numbers in front of those. Those are separate statements. They are not part of the enumerated list above. So once, when the motion is made, we will be voting on the article with those amendments. There will now be seven enumerated items with two sentences at the end of the article. Are there any questions on that? The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. Ms. Kendall.
Tricia Kendall, six Rebenekka Road, representing the Planning Board. Okay, so for this one, and I'm going to reiterate, I think hopefully everyone has in their hands or will very shortly, this amendment, this is intended to allow residents to add a front porch to their house, given certain dimensional setbacks. There are neighborhoods in Ashland where the houses were established far before the current zoning setbacks that, at minimum, I believe, call for thirty, there's three residential zones in Ashland, R.A., R.B., and R.M., and all three of them require thirty to forty-foot front setbacks in the front yard. So there's obviously, and especially in our smaller neighborhoods, setbacks that these were just formed way before, way after those communities were built, right? And so there, it's difficult for them to do something as kind of street-friendly and neighborhood building as putting on a front porch. So this bylaw is trying to allow that to happen and to add to the character of our residential streets. The, what I have on here is saying friendly amendment shown in red, and this is, actually, we're recorrecting this because knowing very little about how to write amendments or to take care of this stuff in town meeting on the advice of Town Council, we're trying to handle it properly. So what is being done here, the change is simply in-
Tricia, I'm going to interrupt you because I've already gone through that with-
Okay, all right, all right. So they didn't have it in hand or weren't able to see it, so I thought I'd clarify. All right, so this, the covered, the covered open air front porch, dimensional require, the dimensional requirements requiring minimum front yard setbacks in residential districts shall not apply to a covered open air front porch, so meaning you can add an open air front porch, where at least ninety percent of the porch is located in the front, you may have steps down or something along the sides, provided that no portion of a covered open air front porch shall be enclosed by a screen, glass, building walls, whether full or partial, except open handrails or guardrails as required by code. So these really have to be open porches, not closed porches. Of a depth, including roof lines and columns, but not stairs, of no greater than ten feet, so that would be maximum, of a height no greater than one story as related to the adjoining buildings. Then the next part of this would be a separate point, as described by the moderator, so that no portion would have habitable space or balconies above the front porch. No portion would be located closer to the front line than a distance equal to sixty percent of the current setback, so there still would be sixty percent of the remaining setback. No portion would be covered with a flat, non-sloped roof unless that roof is simply an open trellis, and that no portion would be constructed in noncompliance with all the other requirements of the zoning. So side setbacks, lot coverages, those would have to remain in effect. The last two points are separate from the other list. The first, the volume and footprint of the covered open air front porch is not considered in the footprint if a house is torn down and you want to rebuild. So the front porch, you do not get to use this as your existing footprint if someone is thinking about doing that to an existing house. And the last point is that these bylaws only apply to houses that are in existence today. If this passes, it would not be applicable to anything, any houses built in the future that you have to adhere to the setback lines. These are only things that are already in existence today. Thank you.
While you're there, does the Planning Board have a recommendation?
Oh, yeah. Planning Board recommends that town meeting accept this change in bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. To allow discussion, I'll hand in motion that the town amend the Town of Ashland zoning bylaws, Chapter two eighty-two, Section four dot one dot six, as printed in the warrant, and as revised, my early explanation. Do I have such a motion? Discussion.
Hi, Matt Warner, fourteen Dean Road. I just have a question on, is the sixty percent being taken of the required setback? So if you have a house that was built before the thirty-foot setback, would you be taking sixty percent of that, the required, or what's actually there, if it's grandfathered in?
So the definition of the sixty percent, does that apply to the current regulations or what was in effect when the house was built? Is that your question? Yes. Ms. Kendall.
So the, thank you. So the statement actually says that no portion of the front porch can be located closer to the front lot line than a distance six, equal to sixty percent of the applicable front yard setback requirement.
Right, but is that of the current setback requirement? The current zone, the sixty percent, does it apply? If there's, you mentioned earlier that there's a thirty, a thirty-foot setback requirement. Does that, so the sixty percent is applied to the thirty feet? That's the question. Right.
Yes, that is a good question. Okay, answer is yes, according to my colleagues.
The answer is yes. The sixty percent applies to current zoning. Thank you. Ms. Nardone.
Could this porch in these non-conforming lots end up in the public right of way if they're that close?
Could, could the-
And I'm gonna sit.
I'm getting a head shake of no, that cannot happen. Seeing nothing further, we'll move to a vote. As with all zoning requirements, articles, this will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article nine, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. Sorry for that. Article ten, I think I said earlier to my wife last night, this is the longest article in my almost eleven years of doing this. Article ten, amend zoning bylaw, revise and replace downtown district zoning sponsored by the Planning Board. To see if the town will vote to replace the Town of Ashland zoning bylaw, Chapter two eighty-two, Section eight point five, with the new Section eight point five that is printed in the warrant, or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. Ms. Kendall, and let's just do this at a high level, and I'm sure there'll be lots of questions we can address as they go through.
Tricia Kendall, six Rebenekka Road, representing the Planning Board. Okay, this is obviously, it's, there's a lot of changes here. There's, looks like a lot of changes here, but the substantial changes are simpler than it appears. So bear with me, and please answer any questions that you have. Much of this, again, is being distributed, distributed in a separate packet that kind of defines, kind of point by point within this zoning, what the changes are. So Section, Section eight point five is, is really about zoning in the downtown district. So all of Section eight in the bylaws is about different types of zoning in different types of overlay districts. Eight point five is specifically about downtown, the downtown zoning districts, and how we, and how we want to zone that area. So as you'll see in the packet, there's smaller changes, and I'll do, as the moderator suggested, and kind of skip through some of these to get to the substantial ones, though I was trying to list all the changes in that bylaw. The substantial change comes in the second page of your packet, where it says, eight, existing Section eight point five point seven, remove old tables, diagrams, and notes for subareas A, B, and C in downtown zoning. Downtown zoning is very complicated. There's the general zoning, and then three other zoning areas. I assume zoning is going to be coming up often in the future as we really try to look at our downtown and what we want to see happen there. And you may remember when this Form Based Code was voted on at town meeting. We are still doing Form Based Code, so these things are just, we're just cleaning this up and moving a little bit. So in this case, the text, the old text, will be remaining, but we're getting rid of these diagrams. One is about, and the diagram and table, one of which is about subarea A, one is about subarea B, one is about subarea C, and then there are some notes, and we're trying to put this in an easier read-to-read form in the page about three pages in that says, "New tables and notes for subareas A, B, and C." So the current text that is there is exactly the text that is in the zoning right now. What is redone is the, is this table, where we've taken out the pictures and we've tried to make the table more clear, that you can see subarea A, subarea B, and subarea C, all at the same time on the same page. Currently, so areas in red, circled or printed, show changes. So currently, in these areas, for mixed use and commercial, there is a zero front setback. So there is no setback requirement in the downtown zoning area for these types of buildings. It is zero. What we are asking for is an eight-foot minimum setback for mixed use and commercial buildings. This is the setback for the larger part of the Bagel Table building, to kind of get it in your head about what eight feet is. And as you know, Bagel Table has some tables outside to get an idea of what, of what eight feet is. And then it goes to a maximum of fifteen feet. That hasn't changed. Residential only has not changed. For a side yard setback, we have zero, which is what is in the code now. If you're sharing a party wall, if there's a flat wall there and you're going to meet up with the flat wall of the existing building, you're sharing a common wall, then the setback is obviously zero. Otherwise, it is fifteen feet. Currently in the wall, in, sorry, currently in the bylaws, it is just zero. So on the side, the setback is just zero. Not five feet, not ten feet, it's zero. So we're adding in here, on the side, if it's not a common wall, you need fifteen feet. And that is true for subareas A, B, and C. B and C, that side setback goes to ten feet instead of fifteen. And the other change here is that we are setting, based on a lot of feedback from various buildings around town, especially in the downtown zoning district, we're setting a maximum height of these types of buildings in town to thirty-eight feet. That is, again, in the, Peter might have to confirm this with me, but the height that we're, of the Bagel Table building, buildings that we're already familiar with. So the circled two areas, we're previously allowed to go higher than that. So we're looking to keep the height in the downtown area low, at least for the present time, until we can look at things more carefully and more in a more widespread way. The rest of this section at the bottom of the page and on the following pages tries to describe in more detail things like building orientation. Buildings should be kind of parallel to the street and not set at odd angles where possible, right? That we're trying to create, trying to create a streetscape. Front yards, within the front yard, you could have outdoor seating, you could have a garden space, and so giving uses for what that front yard space is about. Parking is not allowed in that front yard space, right? That is for the public use. Number four, rear yards, I think is important. Before we didn't, we had a twelve-foot rear yard setback, even if the property was adjoining a residential neighborhood. Now we're saying, if there's a commercial property adjoining a residential neighborhood, you need a thirty-foot setback, the same it would be from residence to residence, right? That seems more than fair. Other areas discuss height. One thing we have allowed in Item seven, looking at various areas of downtown and characters that downtown have, we do have that height can be increased up to forty-eight feet, but only to allow for architectural features, not living space. So things like a pinnacle, a cupola, a clock tower, things that give buildings character, both in Ashland and in other towns. Those, but if you want one of those, it would be through a special permit by the Planning Board, so we would be looking at that more carefully. Again, there's some more information about how the height is determined. We're looking at the height from the level of the street, that thirty-eight feet, and looking at, and leaving in the code that a fourth story, not any higher than forty-eight feet, or sorry, than thirty-eight feet, but that a fourth story could be added through a special permit by the, by the Planning Board. If you turn the page, again, there's some very small little changes throughout, directing people to the Ashland Design Review Guidelines, trying to get specific about different areas, different criteria that we're looking at having as we make these decisions. And then finally, at the end, and this is kind of the second big part of this, of these changes, is the creation of a new eight point five point eleven. We have a- We have a little text there that was taken out, that is existing text, and deals with the way buildings are designed, but that is put into the new part of the warrant. Can you scroll up to, to that part, to 8.5.11? 8.5.11 is long and not included in your, in the handout. Those were really just for changes, where this part would be new. So in that new part, eight point, the new 8.5.11. There we go. It's about building design standards. So here's the, where the Form-Based Code and the, and the diagrams went to, they didn't disappear. What we did find as a part of Planning Board, and some of the new buildings that come up, that sometimes developers look at the pictures given, and they just say, oh, all I have to do is copy this picture, and I should get approved, which is not the point, obviously. It's to look at what we have in town, learn from it, and give us a good building to talk about, right? So we have some designs here that are, that are based on buildings in Ashland, in downtown, part of our historic character, if you can go forward. And then, as you'll see in your warrant, I won't read through all of this, but it tries to get more specific about how long can the facade be. You know, if there's a building that is greater, they're proposing a facade greater than 60 feet along the street, after 45 feet, you have to change the plane, the way the Bagel Table building does, right? The Bagel Table building looks like two buildings, because first, there's part of the building, and then the other part is pushed back. So you have to have some variation in that front facade. It talks about the amount of glass in different parts of the facade, it talks about architectural elements that should be included in the design of these new buildings. Can you scroll forward a little bit? We also start to get more descriptive about the types of roofs, so that things like a hip roof, a gable, a front gable, all of these are allowed by right, as long as the pitch is at least a 712. You can't have one of those tiny little roof pitches and think it's okay. But if you want a mansard and a, or a flat roof, those have to come before Planning Board has a special permit, or if you want a different roof pitch than what's given. Those have to be a special permit to look at that, to make sure that they're really adhering to the character that we are trying to build in Ashland, remembering that these don't just sit with the Planning Board, but they go then to that more intensive Design Review Committee process as well. Can you push it forward a little bit? I think we went by it, but it's in your, it's in your handout, just different types of dormers, encouraging these types of, these type of things to developers, to make buildings that are really more, really more what we want to look at in the character of the downtown zoning district. The rest of it, that is shown in your warrant about landscaping, things like that, that's existing text, and that, and we, we're not changing that. So obviously, it's been a lot of work, there's still a lot of work to go, I'm sure it isn't perfect, but the Planning Board, with these changes, the Planning Board strongly recommends that you vote for this warrant in order to help our downtown grow smartly in the direction that you would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. And you already answered the question, is there a recommendation for the Planning Board? So to allow discussion, I'll, I'd have a motion, that the town amend, the Town of Ashland zoning bylaws, Chapter 282, Section 8.5, as printed in the warrant. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Mr. Sony.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Mark DeSoney, 49 Hawthorne Road. It's been years since I had this Form-Based Code passed by town meeting and by Attorney General. I wanted, in my mind, was to make this town grow economically, and make it look more presentable, offer $495 to come in, not to, not to drive by, but to stop in, in Newark. Now, times have changed, and now we have an updated Form-Based Code with existing sections that is now today's use, or what we should get in this town. So I am so happy that Planning Board has heard me, has seen me give them the paperwork and everything that I did before of the town meeting last, about five or six years ago, that this is new district notes and tables, and the, and the, the takeouts, and then take out the old Form-Based Code and bring in new ones. The Planning Board and all, and all the meetings have came out in the right direction to make the town look even better for anybody coming in, and to help developers work together with the town to make it look better, make it look interesting and more business economically The use tables has become upgraded too, and the two in the circle, I think it's 856, and the, the mental standards required, the two in the circles, yes, those are the special permit ones for the height max, along with the side yards and everything. So recommended to pass this, to get Ashland boosted up along with everybody else in the Metro West, get business, educational, economic standards to 2022 standards and beyond. So pass this, and thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, we're having some technical trouble with our countdown clocks, so I'm gonna just use mine up here. Unfortunately, you won't be able to see it up there, but I'll, I'll work it from up here.
Preston Crowe, 41 Rockwood. I see a lot of good work in here that gives the Planning Board a lot more tools to control new, new developments to fit in with the town better. I think it's a lot of really good work. I don't see anything that stands out to me as allowing something that wasn't allowed before. It's all more restrictions. That's not correct, I would like some clarification on that. And I know there's a lot of talk about redevelopment of some of the old mill buildings downtown, and is there anything in specific to that, that this would allow that is not already allowed, or does it simply give the Planning Board more control to shape those developments as they come?
So the question being, does this revision allow anything that doesn't already allow, with particular focus on the, the project that has been currently in discussion?
Yeah, I think the only thing that's, I'd have to look at the existing code again, is that 48 feet, which may be slightly higher than the 45 feet originally for a second, for a fourth floor, but the 48 feet isn't about living space, so we're allowing a four, that 48 feet by special permit only for items such as a spire, a cupola, a clock tower, something like that, that that was kind of new, as we kind of looked at the character of downtown, and, and what gave our buildings additional character. So that's new, might fit under that category. And then, talking about the mill building, I think that we did discuss in a brief way, that, that site was very unique in that it's kind of a three stories on one side, and four stories on the another side, so we wanted to make sure our, we wanted to make sure we defined where 38 feet starts at. Like, different towns have different ways of defining a, defining a maximum height. We were really concerned about defining the feel of the street, so our 38 feet is measured from the street, from the front part of the street, in order to really define those streets, and that would be different than a slope backside.
So to be, to be clear, I know there's been discussion online about this. Is there anything in these changes that would affect the ability of a development on the mill property to do more than it, anything more than it can currently do?
There's no change in the underlying zoning of different, or districts in different areas, no. We don't, it's really about building design, and not about any kind of change in district throughout this, we're not addressing that.
Thank you. Ms. Nardone.
I, I actually cross-checked the old and the new, and I did find something that is different that bothered me. They now allow, with all these different exceptions, but basically, it is allowed, if the Planning Board wants it, to have first-floor residential. That is something we voted on, it was very important to people to not have first-floor front-facing residential apartments, because that's how we build. So that's different. And my other thing is, this sounds great, you know, but if you read through it, which I did carefully, everything's negated. There's, but no matter what you do, there's always an exception to the exception, and the Planning Board can decide if it feels like it, to negate everything, from the minimum lot size to the rear setback, to, and I don't understand a four-story building that's 38 feet high, I mean, that would be very low ceilings. So I am, I am going to vote no on this, because this reads to me like a nice footprint for apartment buildings all over this downtown, which I do not want. We need more businesses. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
James Morrissey, Voyagers Lane. I hope you'll pardon me, I don't know the name of the project, but there's a relatively new building opposite the PD, I think everybody knows.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
I said I do not know the name of the building, so I hope you'll pardon me, the na, I don't know the name of the project. There's a new building, a new edifice, substantial one across the street from the Police Department.
Yep.
I'm just curious, for purposes of visualization, within the context of discussing setbacks and heights, what is the setback of the, of the first-floor facade, and the second-floor facade, and the overall height of that building, please?
Ms. Kendall?
Yeah, I think, I think you're referring to the 128 Main Street Building, which is the new white residential building, cream-colored residential building across from. The setback on the, I believe, Peter, and that is on the top floor? The top floors, which stick out further than the bottom floors.
They create a portico.
That setback is 2.5 feet. So remember that currently, right now, it is zero, with the current code.
They could have gone, they could have gone.
They could have gone to the street.
Closer to the street.
That's right.
But right now, they're setback two and a half, and that's measured at the facade of the second floor.
That's measured from that facade of the second floor, which is closer to the street than the first.
Through me, please.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And what is the overall height of that building?
The overall height of the building is?
38 feet.
38.
That is 38 feet.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to add one little clarification to that. The setback currently is 2.8 feet, so you can visual, you can clearly visualize what that means, but when the downtown project will be completed, the sidewalks will be extended five feet further. And so the Planning Board took that into consideration when they approved that building. So it's going to be closer to eight feet, which I believe is what the, the change is in this current zoning proposal.
So it's 2.8 feet going to 7.8 feet, we just all have to visualize what that might be in the future.
Chuck Lids, 150 Oregon Road. I am a member of the Sustainability Committee, and I, in general, I think this is wonderful, and I commend the committee for doing this. The problem I have is with the concept of building orientation. In a certain way, obviously, it's nice to have the buildings oriented to the street, but it is also true that orienting a building to the south can save 30% of the building's heat, and I wish that the, the committee plans allowed flexibility on that, so that we, this, to facilitate our, meeting our goals of net zero by 2040. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Catherine Rooney, 136 Fountain Street. So I want to say thanks to the Planning Board for all the hard work on this. I'm still, though, very disappointed, because I've given feedback before. We do things like this, we ought to have maps for people to visualize where these things are taking place, because it's, there's a lot of text in here, and some people just do better with the combination, some people just do better with the visual, and we need to start doing it. So I got a couple of concerns, one of which is echoing what Mr. Liz just said, in terms of sustainability, because I don't see a lot about it in these, even though it might not be specifically being addressed, we need to encourage it, because that, I feel like that gets thrown away a lot of times, when developers are going to do something the town wants. Number two, trees, in particular, are a large part of what you just said about orienting the buildings, and adding specifically a requirement, not saying it's just a standard, but saying up at the top on Section 3, whatever this is here, 8.5.6.3, front yards, taking garden space and adding in trees and planters to it, and putting that as the requirement before all these other outdoor seating, publicly available, and space and other uses, I'd like to make that as a friendly amendment to this, so that those amenities are specifically required, because there's very little else in here that actually requires those sorts of things. And repeatedly, we have heard from the people of Ashland in surveys, and feedback at all kinds of meetings, that we have these sorts of things. Would that be considered friendly?
Yeah, we, we can't make that motion on Town Meeting floor, it hasn't been through the proper review and notice requirements.
You can't make amendments on the Town Meeting floor?
Not to re, add a new requirement to something that exists. To modify something in here, that wouldn't be a problem, but to add a requirement to require, to require trees, I've spoken to council, it's not something we could do on Town Meeting floor.
So how would, how would we be able to amend it to that effect?
You couldn't make that amendment today, you'd have to go through the regular bylaw amendment process.
So we'd have to come back to the Town Meeting floor?
To amend that, yes.
Okay. The other piece about the sustainability requirements is, I don't see anything about permeability of sidewalks, driveways, and, you know, we're, it's, it's 2021, we're way behind the curve ball here, we need to start doing that for sustainability, keeping water in town, we've had two record-breaking droughts within the past five years, we got to get with the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Gazzard, 21 Park Road. Thank you for hearing me. I just watched the Planning Board on Wednesday night, one resident, one tree, one scenic road, one and a half hours they spent talking about that, right? Now we're talking about, the biggest thing you missed, and I appreciate the Planning Board representing, but they didn't talk about residential. Where, they're talking, you're talking about turning in the mills, 100% commercial into residential. I don't understand where the Conservation Committee is, there's a river that.
Chris, I'm going to stop it right there, we are not here to talk about the mill building project.
Okay, well, then let's talk about downtown. Let's talk about the conservation, the river, we're just going to call it Pond Park? I mean, it's just the density, traffic, impact on schools, 250 apartments was what was, Mr. Moderator, that's what was shown to the town, and we're not, we're, we're saying, yeah, let's change the zoning. It's ridiculous, it's absurd. I'm not opposed to mixed use, but I am opposed to this project, I think it, it, there's a lot of hard work that went into it.
But again, Chris.
But it's not ready for prime time. I vote no. Town vote no.
We, we were not speaking about this particular project, my understanding is that zoning within that project will be before Town Meeting in the fall, and that will be the appropriate time to have that conversation. The article that we're speaking now does not contemplate, or discuss, or impact that project one way or the other.
Yeah, if I can clarify, Mr. Moderator, to know that that project has absolutely nothing to do with this process. This process started a long time ago, with this zoning, that a grant, we, Ashland received a grant to start looking at our downtown zoning as a whole, it doesn't actually have anything to do with that project. I understand the controversy with it, we're very, we know it's going to come our way if it goes forward, but it's important to know that nothing in here is about that building. We're looking at the whole downtown area. And I'd like to emphasize, you know, with some of Kathy's points, because, you know, she is a member of our Design Review Committee, much appreciated, and, and I think she knows that I'm also a former chair of the Sustainability Committee as well, and so sustainability is obviously incredibly important to me. So the, the things that she mentioned about sustainability, you know, those will come into play, we want to look at sustainability more as we look at these zoning districts, but even in these changes, you can see the complexity of the zoning, and we just could not tackle, especially in COVID, when the, when the Planning Board could not lean over a map together during this past year and a half, to try to, we did tour, we did walk around together with masks around the downtown area, but we just. around together with masks around the downtown area, but we just couldn't get into the kind of detail that these things are going to require. So even not having maps up, none of these changes have anything to do with maps. This is about going from a zero setback to an eight-foot setback. This is about allowing a certain building height, trying to address the things that have happened recently in Ashland that people, that really bothered our residents. That's what we want to try to take care of right now. Is this, is this look at our zoning over? No way. You know, we're going to be getting into this deeply and to try to really push us toward the vision that Ashland residents have, not that the Ashland Planning Board has, but Ashland residents has. So we understand it's not complete, it's not perfect. We're trying to make a step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nardone.
Yes. The grant for this, this zoning change was in 2018, but so was the grant that talked about turning the whole downtown into an apartment. So I would say they're exactly parallel. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. As with all zoning articles, this will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you and opposed. I declare a two-thirds majority, and that article passes. There be no further business. I'll undertake a motion to dissolve. All in favor? Adjourned. See y'all at the farmer's market.